It's five thirty one, so I'm going to call this meeting to order. And I wonder if everybody would please stand with me for a moment of silence for Reeve Stansfield. Okay, thank you, everybody. Next on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda minutes. We're by Councilor.
Thank you, Chair. We're by myself, and the agenda committee of the whole meeting for November twenty twenty four will adopt the best present.
Any questions, changes, comments, all in favor? Gary Madsen. Hello, Mayor Brown, I see you there. Mayor Brown is joining us via Zoom. Number three. Thanks, nice to see you. If anyone has any cuminary juice now or any time during the meeting, just please let us know. There's no other rules under the planning act and adoptions of the minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I have a cuminary just on seven point two.
Okay.
I understand that there are a little bit of presentation by Mr. Pearman.
Yeah, I was talking about that once we get there, but you're correct. Thank you. Okay, back to number five, adoption minutes. Councilor Waterfield.
That means the regular committee of the whole meeting, number twenty eight, twenty four, made a group.
Discussion? All in favor? Gary Madsen. And we have one delegation tonight, Daniel Siegel from Siegel Construction, talking about municipal housing initiatives. And Councilor, I guess we'll do that portion. We have him on line?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Okay, Mr. Siegel, you have the floor for ten minutes.
Thank you for the introduction. My name's Daniel Siegel, a matarion builder who's been doing laneway houses and garden suites since twenty twenty. I'm here before council this evening to advocate for attainable home ownership units in Perth. I guess the big issue here is that upper tier municipalities are responsible for everything from transitional housing right up until rent gear to income housing. And then it's up to the private sector to build everything else. And I believe that private developers don't really have a vested interest in building entry level housing. Specifically, that type of house as defined by Bill twenty three, the Building Faster Act, that defines an affordable house as one costing two hundred and seventy six thousand dollars or less in Perth. And I was hoping to advocate for council to consider the support of developers or even considering doing it themselves to build and supply the market with attainable homes. My goal here is to delegate before every single municipality in the province to say, hey, look over here, nobody's really doing this. And they're not doing it because the numbers don't really work. And historically, these types of houses have really only been built twice in Canadian history, one during the wartime boom and one in the eighties. And every time since then, people like myself have been buying houses and taking what was an attainable house and transforming that into something that we see primarily in the housing market, which is unaffordable. I have a model that I'd like to work with the municipality with to build compact communities of attainable homes. These are modest homes, they're not trailer park homes, but they're also not mansions. To be able to supply these types of housing to Ontario residents, filling the gap where government ends and developers start. I think that this is a chasm in housing that isn't being addressed. And everyone's kind of expecting someone else to deal with it. I come this evening to present basically an ask, whether that be supporting with municipal land, supporting through helping make bylaws more attractive to higher density, or even simple things like alternative structures to decouple the cost of land from the cost of the house. I have a presentation, but I guess it's difficult to show it. But everything is nicely laid out there. And I only ask that this delegation be referred to staff so that I could have a more in-depth conversation with planners, perhaps the C A O. Because historically, this type of housing has been funded through government support with low interest rates or granting of land. And frankly, prices aren't falling anytime soon. And so I think it's incumbent upon all of us to come together to address the issue of the chasm in the housing continuum that's really leaving behind young people who are looking to get into the housing market. And frankly, old people who want to downsize and stay in their communities. So in conclusion, if this is something that Perth wants to continue further, I'd be more than happy to sit down for a conversation to lay out some potential solutions to the housing crisis in Ontario. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. Does any member of council have a question for Mr. Siegel? Councilor Waterfield.
Through the chair, through Mr. Siegel. Mr. Siegel, I think that your intent is laudable. I think in any community, especially in our Perth, we need to have housing at different price points, housing of different kinds to reflect different lifestyles. So your intent is laudable. Of course, the details are missing. So as you requested, I would encourage you to contact our planning development. We'll wait for a meeting for further discussion.
Will do.
Councilor McRae.
Um, to you, Chair. I would also, as a councilor, I would be very interested in seeing in detail what exactly we are able to come up with in this price range or what you are proposing in this price range. And I guess from a planning point of view, where in fact, if we were able to do this, do we have the problem to implement this?
Any further questions? We have a motion on Florida from Councilor Waterfield.
As recommended by the committee of the whole, we have resolved that the council of the town of Perth received before information, the delegation from Siegel Construction as presented at the committee of the whole, meeting November the fifth, twenty twenty four.
Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion? Gary Madsen. Thank you, Mr. Siegel.
Thank you for your time. Have a great evening.
Correspondents, seven one, seven two. Mr. Pearman wrote an email on the letter to town and also presented a petition about concerns about speeding and traffic on Craig Street and the adjoining streets. For council members' knowledge, staff did meet with Mr. Pearman, explained how our traffic policy works and the updated work we're going to be doing on Craig Street. And they're continuing to meet with him in the future to keep him apprised of stuff, go up, turn around, put some on. If he has any more questions, he can get back to them too. So let me open dialogue as we go forward. But they really want to let them understand the whole plan for Craig Street because it does identify some of his issues. Okay? I mean, motion, I can see several sections tonight. Staff reports. Mr. Bruce.
Thank you. So September's statements are attached from your information with the associated notes. I would note that no particular issues for the first nine months of the year is identified as systemic weaknesses in the in operations that would result in a significant budget variance. We're doing okay as far as cash balances go, pretty much on track to meet the budget projection for reserves and net financial asset. In fact, it would be slightly better in those reserves. Operations just slightly hit a budget in terms of generating contribution. So nothing particular to bring your attention other than the future impact sheet on the first page. Now, the first two I've touched on before in the landfill site require more outreach costs than previously been identified. That's going to be accrued in twenty twenty four and it is part of the post twenty twenty five budgets. I T equipment, we've talked about the P O A. I T systems expecting to exceed budget. It's not really totally within our control, it's part of the control of the ministry as a general. So we're just basically seeing how it done. However, I have more in the treasures in the other municipalities that this is taking place and therefore their contributions from us are likely to be a bit lower this year and possibly next year as well. And they understand the rationale. And I will say that Microsoft has announced again the support for a great planning software, which is our core financial tax and everything software that we run. And so they're pulling their support by twenty twenty nine. And of course, everybody in Ontario reviews great plans, which is a black set of predominant package in the province. Are now looking to move to another package. We will also have to move. I wouldn't suggest we wait till twenty twenty nine, move the package. I think we're going to have to do a bunch of pre-planning. Treasures have already talked about possibly issuing an adjoining R P. Just to get some information back in. This one is not included in the asset management plan yet. And it's initialized from the sort of three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand and change of over. So good news, I know, it's not. But it's just another thing beyond our control.
Councilor Bruce.
Thank you for the chair. In relation to what you just been speaking about, great pains. I would get nervous now because I always think of the insurance model that will get more of one limited, that's available to us. Is there a very competitive market for this or are you committing a new, you own to one or two systems?
Through the chair, there's there's three or four systems that I'm actually aware of that do municipal type fundancies. Couple of them are probably too small for work. So I would expect that, you know, they wouldn't get a big consideration, but there's a couple that are of significant size that we probably look back there. I'm assuming once we work with the other municipalities in the county, we'll identify all the ones that are out there and that are applicable. And we're not dissimilar in size to most of the municipalities. Okay.
Mayor Brown.
Yes, I have two questions. Has the cost of the closure gone up because provincial regulations have changed? And I'll give you that, I'll come back with a second one.
The provincial regulations have not changed. The assessment of the amount of clay required to cap the site, once the data later, went up significantly. And Grant, is that? So, yeah.
So my second question is, we're acknowledging this item in the asset management plan. So is that simply an acknowledgement? Or are we putting away money, so to speak, to meet that need in the future?
So previously, we had two hundred and twenty thousand dollars budget for clay capping over last year, this year, and next year. And that figures increased to the eight hundred and thirty five thousand. It was always included in the asset management plan and actually wasn't needed approved budgets for twenty twenty four. And when we went to try and implement it, realized that it wasn't sufficient. So it will be, the addition will be approved as an expense under the asset retirement obligations this year. And it's in, so it's definitely going to hit the bottom line this year. Under the A R O, I've got a nice disaster. And it's in the most capital of budget in the future as a.
Supplement your question, if I could. Is that true of all items in, let's say, is it set up so that we need, we knew, sorry, we know that we need a new dump truck in twenty twenty seven? Is a certain amount of money just to take place?
In the asset management plan and the five year capital financial projections, if there, for instance, a trap that requires replacement in twenty twenty seven, yes, it's included in those projections.
Okay.
Councilor Bruce.
Thank you. For the chair. Just for clarification, for myself and practically what happens listening. This is in relation to if we had to close a waste management project? Or is it ongoing? It's related, to the chair, it's related to the closure of a portion of the landfill site. And we still, perhaps direct and hon, absolutely better. You still have the capacity to potentially extend the life of the waste management project in a manner similar to what we recently did. And I'm just thinking about future input and future demand on that side.
Yeah, the clay cabbage is the historic volume of waste that's will no longer be built on. So that's a, it's a permanent component, but as we keep going in the fifteen year increments, we may claw back some of that clay to keep expanding. So this isn't an end game as far as that area, but it's a mandatory requirement to prevent water from intruding into the waste pile. Thank you.
Any other questions? Brian, this doesn't include the close up costs. Is that a separate line item? Remember before we had to budget so much a year, but we had to reach like fifty million dollars or three million dollars or something by so long. How does this tie into that?
So it's a component part of the total. The, we had about two and a half million dollars accrued under the asset retirement obligations for the landfill closure cost. And that's over a period of fifteen years. This was the first three years of the closure cost, you know, which we had as we put it lower, obviously. And but it's still, it's been a simple apartment that we do. It's, the rest of it's still in existence as well. It still exists as a life of it.
Okay. Any further questions for Grant or Brian? Councilor Waterfield.
Just a more through the chair to Brian. Going back to the cessation of the dynamic great plan software, we're really talking the cost you can vote at that would be until twenty eight, twenty nine, in terms of budget.
I suspect if we're going to do it, we're going to have to do it in the next couple of years. So yeah. Everybody be going with our R P's right now and talking to the other treasures in the county. And at least one municipality is almost ready to issue a R P and we're going to be back on it to get the information. Then I think what you'll see is, because there's only a few benefits you can do. Whoever's first out of the gate will get, of course, the front of the scheduling. So if we were first out of the gate in twenty twenty five, we'd probably get it started in twenty twenty five. We waited a couple of years and waited for the way to that because that would quickly actually near the team off. We were going to get it in by twenty nine. So it's going to have to be sooner rather than later process.
So therefore could have budget implications moving on a nice couple of years.
Probably twenty seven would be the earliest I would expect it to happen. Well, twenty six, twenty seven.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Brown, you have any other question?
I do not.
Okay. All right, if there's no further comments on that one, Councilor Brown with the motion.
As recommended by the committee of the whole, be it resolved that the council of the town of Perth receives the non-ordered financial statements for the corporation of the town of Perth to September thirtieth, twenty twenty four, as presented in report twenty twenty four dash hour dash fifteen point one.
Discussion? All in favor? Gary Madsen. Next minute's planning fees update. Joanna, do you just want to give a brief update or just want to answer your questions?
Um, I guess I didn't put the report, I don't think, so I was really quickly just advised and I'm open for questions. But the last time we did do revision reviews was in two thousand and nine. There have been like a couple of years just like adding fees or adding C P I. That's in twenty sixteen, I believe. But really, this hasn't been adapted on any great scale since two thousand and nine. So it's, it's something I've wanted to do since I got here and finally had the resources in the department to be able to sort of move this along. So open to questions.
Councilor McRae.
On to you, Chair. In looking at these substantial increases in the various parts of segments, I guess you could say, of planning, I think this is going to be a game changer. Because a lot of those prices have even doubled in terms of what we were charging before and moving forward with what we're going to be charging. One of the questions I have, so I'm hoping that that might give us a bit of relief in terms of generating revenues moving forward with our twenty twenty five budget. But the other thing is it, I believe it was J P two G and did he, did they all, correct?
The J P two G, they did the main components of the, of the major fees.
Yes.
And then I did the remainder of the, the smaller fees or the minor major amendments to. I looked at adjoining municipalities and I had actually taken the fee schedule I had used in previous positions and just sort of modified it and changed it based on some of the fees I've seen now and based on my knowledge of how many hours these things take and how they can be completed or not.
If I may add one additional question. So they may mention that these are the medium in compared to other municipalities. So my question is, in comparison to other municipalities, are we talking appearance of comparative size or are we talking about within Landmark County or external Ontario? Because from the developer's point of view, I suspect they're going to be comparing those prices when it comes to where they're going to go.
Yes, I think two things to mention, much of Landmark County is rural. And so many of their P H Bs are just are middle.
It's new.
But I think we're going to compare it. So, you know, brown place, Mississippi, north, red, Smith Falls. We kind of fall in the, in the median category. I think just a brief note on this is we probably could go higher. I think that a larger developer would be able to stand those higher fees, but we also need to consider the amount of the public who are willing to do it. It's not the my merits for a debt. And, you know, they probably feel on a lower end of the scale. So we need, it needs to be consistent in our fees. You can't say this is a big developer, you're paying this and don't help us, you're paying that. So the median level is, is the one that sort of makes sense. And I think we're in a in a, in a good place for comparison. Thank you.
Mayor Brown.
Yes, I understand the concern about putting the fees up. But reading the report, fees are being put up in order to try to mediate the, the cost of processing the applications. Like it's, it's astounding the amount of work that it's required. But I think that as far as developers go, they not only look at cost, they look at the nature of the community and what is desirable about it if they want to, say, sell homes to, to young families. And I, I know that from going around meeting with the industries that that's one of the things that has attracted the industries and has attracted the employers. But that Perth is such a, not only a safe community, but a very attractive community. So I just would reiterate that I don't think the cost of development fees is the sole factor in our town as compared to others. It's the sole factor that's comes into play when a developer thinks of locating here.
Any other questions for Joanna? Councilor Bruce.
Thank you, through the chair. It's entirely up the light that I miss burn. And did you have somewhat mentioned things being linked to consumer price index?
It is, I believe I did in the fee schedule. So it's, it's not consumer price index, construction price index. So I would, so when you have this fee button placed, there will be a yearly increase in the fee by construction price index. Which is, which is actually, I don't recall, like the G U C, we remain, we remain planning fees out of the fees and charge, charge bottom up because that's consumer price index. We put them in a bottom of our own, so that we can do construction price index. The other thing that I may have to report later is I think this is something that we should be like separately. And I speak with here on the other day in bottom up. It's a, a good idea that we have this plan, it's the update in sixty thousand nine. You know, maybe every time we give a visual plan, it would be or something we, we have a little bit of this. So that is in our report, but I think it was a more pliable idea brought forward.
Just supplementary to that, thank you for clarifying that. A question. Because C P I stands for consumer price index and for construction, will we actually, to prevent any misunderstandings in future, will we actually articulate the construction price index in natural wording as opposed to just using the abbreviation C P I?
I believe in the fee schedule of construction price index.
You're clarifying that, Brian.
If I, if I didn't, then you can make that modification. But I think, I remember you had commented about that earlier in another topic. And so I fully remembered it out in there.
I'm just clarifying that, so I can let you make a decision. Okay.
A brief comment of Deputy Mayor. I will definitely be supporting this motion as Joanna's just pointed out, there's not been a comprehensive review of things since two thousand and nine. And as we all read through the report, it really gave us an insight as the incredible amount of work and hours that the department puts into various applications. As we put those two together, I really think that these increases are justified and I'll be supporting it.
Okay, any further questions for Joanna? Councilor Waterfield, you have the motion.
As recommended by the committee of the whole, will be resolved that the council of the town of Perth passed by law number three two five zero dash three, being a by law to amend the planning fees, which are just by law number three two five zero dash two, to implement revised fees associated with planning matters as presented in report twenty twenty four dash hour fifteen point two.
Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion? Gary Madsen. Welcome, Mayor Park and downtown law, ladies and gentlemen. Has everybody read it and understand it, so assuming you've done it already, your questions for a minute? No? Can you move the motion, Councilor Bruce?
Here by myself, as recommended by the committee of the whole, be resolved that the council of the town of Perth passed by law number three nine six one dash twenty seven, being a by law to amend the town's traffic and parking by law number three nine six one, as amended to allow for free complimentary parking in the downtown parking lots on the following days. Friday, December the sixth, twenty twenty four, Friday, December the thirteenth, twenty twenty four, Friday, December the twentieth, twenty twenty four, and Friday, December the twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, as presented in the report, twenty twenty four, committee of the whole, fifteen dash three.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, here it is. Report, we're a delegation of authority by law to execute a memorandum of understanding with Snow Road Snowmobile Club for the use of certain town lands. Anyone have any questions for clerk on that project?
Uh, through you, Chair, I just wonder, um, did we charge the snowmobile, the snowmobile club um, for our administrative times drafting up the memorandum? And is it our admin that contacts the various landowners and gets your signatures and goes in the snow road, snowmobile club?
Through the chair. Is this working?
Mm-hmm, it's got to be really close.
Um, so, no, there is no charge. Um, the drafting of the memorandum of under strength, of understanding, actually it's a standard memorandum of understanding that the OFSC provides through the local snowmobile clubs. Um, and with respect to, um, landowner engagement, it's the snowmobile club that, um, is tasked with contacting every landowner to coordinate, like, the betrayal uh, through consecutive paths. Um, so this is no work on behalf of the town.
Shows one, one just additional, so basically, um, our role in this is just strictly oversight.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor McCray, you have the motion.
Thank you, Chair. As recommended by the committee of the whole, be resolved, council of town of Perth passed by law number five one X X, being a bylaw to provide delegated authority to the director of legislative services, clerk, to be executing, to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Snow Road Snowmobile Club for the continued use of Ontario Federation of Snowmobile Clubs, O F S, O F S C trails on certain town property on an annual basis, as presented in report twenty twenty four, count fifteen point four.
Discussion on the motion, all in favor of the motion, here it is. What was being scheduled, committee of the whole, council, and other committees of council, by the clerk, report twenty twenty four, count fifteen point five. Any questions for clerk on the schedule? Amanda, I didn't look at it totally clearly, um, does it line up with the county meetings the same weeks?
Um, it does, but not in all months. And sometimes that's because, um, the Wednesday, the first of the month falls on a Wednesday, which throws off, um, some of that being on the same weeks, but I think for the most part it is. Um, yeah, for the most part it is.
Yeah, thanks a lot, appreciate it. Okay, motion from Councilor Smith.
As recommended by the committee of the whole, be resolved that the council of the town of Perth, one, approve the twenty five, twenty twenty five meeting schedule for committee of the whole, council and all other committees, boards, and advisory panels of council, and two, authorize the director of legislative services clerk to amend the schedule to reflect changes in meetings as required from time to time, as presented in report twenty twenty four dash count dash fifteen dot five.
Discussion on the motion, all in favor of the motion, here it is. Report twenty twenty four, count fifteen point six, approval of site plan control agreements for two thirty four Street Easts and fifty five, fifty seven Drone Street Easts. Anybody want to have any questions for the record?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mary.
Um, where are those two thirty, um, first three days? I should have been out driving and finding that out, but that could not happen at the present time.
Yeah, two thirty, uh, Laura's and Donald's, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Smith.
Um, I just wonder what, uh, is being done at two thirty four Street that requires a site plan?
Uh, they're adding a small addition to the property for, uh, I can't say it wrong, the, uh, the, uh, Peter Stone.
Okay.
A section.
Thank you.
Joanna, did you want to add anything else to the report? You don't have to, you're good, but.
I think everybody's okay. And.
Okay. And Councilor Waterfield, the motion.
As recommended by the committee of the whole, be resolved that the council of the town of Perth, one, passed by law number fifty one, being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to complete site plan control agreement with one four nine nine eight zero two two, Canada Inc., relandings, municipally known as fifty five, fifty seven Drone Street Easts. And two, by law, passed by law number fifty one, being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to complete the site plan control agreement with one one five five seven two two, Ontario landed for lands, municipally known as two, two thirty four Street Easts, as presented in report twenty twenty four, count fifteen point six.
Discussion on the motion. Joanna, just one question, do you have any idea when construction would begin at fifty five, fifty seven?
I believe it should be going, uh, with sourcing and foundation, uh, it's supposed to be in December.
Okay, that should be in October, October, November, so. Okay, any other questions? All in favor of the motion, here it is. Report twenty twenty four, count fifteen point seven, town of Perth Active Transportation Plan Director McDowney. Anybody have any questions for the director? Kathy, would you like to make any comments about the report?
After reading, Chair, this is, uh, a report being brought forward, the final draft of the active transportation plan, I'll bring it forward next month with an official bylaw for, uh, full form.
Any questions for Kathy on the report?
Judy just raised her hand.
Uh, Mayor Brown.
Yes, thank you. Uh, just wondered how things would flow from, from here, because there were three quite disparate plans and attendant costs. So when would council get to decide which option they would choose to pursue?
Through the chair, this is the plan in terms of guidance in terms of our active transportation through all the town of Perth. So that will be related to initiatives that we do for communication and education for the public, as well as looking at future designs for our roads and whether that could be applied to integrate active transportation in. So there's different elements to the plan itself, but there's only one plan brought forward, which is included in the report. Um, and then anytime that we have any decisions that might be related to the active transportation plan would come through through a project, like since a road redesign that occurs, um, or it's a trail system, that would always come through council at that time. However, we are going to look in terms of what is, you know, what's a way that we can integrate some of these recommendations provided in the plan over the next five years. So it's not becoming a shelf document, it's actually an active, um, an active piece of, an active plan that we in, implement your stability. And council can decide how much financially we want to actually contribute to those projects.
Thank you, uh, if I could comment, this demonstrates that this, we shouldn't look at it in isolation. This is part of a greater plan for the town as a whole. Um, that's, am I speaking correctly?
Yep. Councilor McCray, you have your hand up first.
Um, to you, Chair, this is another, just a comment. And I think we really need to educate our community on the funding sources. That is, um, it, it's quite explicit in the document, but unless you read it from page to page and go through the document, um, assumptions are being made. Um, where is, where is our municipality going to get the money for this? So, um, and a lot of work is went into investigating federal and provincial and regional and local funding sources in this document. So I think that's a pivotal, um, part of this document. We need to be, um, engaging the community and promoting. The other thing being, um, is I would, as a member of the B I A and the Perth and District Chamber of Commerce, um, I'm hoping that there will be an opportunity in these presentations to engage them, uh, and have them involved. Um, because, um, I know they're quite concerned, um, in regards to, um, how this whole plan will have an impact on business in the community.
Councilor McCray, you have your hand up.
Thank you, yeah, thank you very much. Uh, through the chair, um, again, in relation to financials, we should, yes, this is, we're heading to you, um. Is each of those columns with a price attached to it? Do independently, or are we going to be presented with, well, because this section will lead to nowhere if we do it on its own, will we end up with a bunch of three or four together? Or do you think it will be each one separately? Because I can see certain parts of the community wanting everything done at once or expecting a stretch to be done. Or will we be presented with one option at a time? I'm thinking long-term financing, as was Councilor McCray there. And I, I don't think we're in a position to do certainly all of it. Or perhaps any of it, but not some other suits of funding.
Through the chair, I think any, any project that comes forward to council will be done in relation to whether it's updating our current asset management plan or if we have opportunities for funding that come forward that can get lived out. So let's say we want to do a trail development, it can actually bring an opportunity that comes forward. We would bring that forward for councils, we're giving approval. So that might fit on two different elements within the plan itself. Um, Grant Council will obviously answer this as well, but it, it's gonna, it's gonna all depend, I guess, on what, what project it is that we're going to be addressing each time.
Uh, through the chair, I would just suggest that, that this plan, like a number of our plans, has a vision component to it, so we have components coming forward to development. They can go online in our model and look at what our desires are in the future, particularly including active transportation and overall, so when we have something like the dog course development, we're not asking set of left field, those proponents concede our desire strengths developing the community. So I think this is a great plan for that. Or in my area, we're doing roads. We know we have a plan for a greater core of it's going to be relayed when we create a boat, a bike lane, or a multi-use trail. So it's, it's any future views is what I see in my area of the active transportation model.
Councilor Waterfield.
Through the chair, I, I, I'm a strong supporter of this plan and I'm building on the comments by, um, previous counselors. I'm, I'm just afraid it's not going to be front and center. And I certainly want to, we all want to avoid this being just on show. So I don't have clarity as to going forward, how we will be implementing across the plan. And I know it depends upon financing grants and so on and so forth, but how do we en- ensure that it's going to be front and center and it's constantly on, on, on the table?
Uh, through the chair, I think what may be beneficial for next month is whenever we have a final approval of the bylaw is to demonstrate how that can be played out. So we can give you examples, um, whether that includes a five-year plan, but also as, as Grant outlined, these are the places where they will play an active role consistently.
Okay, I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I enjoyed the comments from the public.
I guess that's pretty good, that was.
That's right.
He's perfect. Okay, um, Councilor Waterfield, would you move the motion, please?
As recommended by the committee of the whole, be resolved that the council of the town of Perth received from information the active transportation plan is presented in report twenty twenty four, count fifteen point seven.
Any discussion on the motion, all in favor of the motion, here it is. Number nine, CEO and Director Department told me updates, does anybody have any questions for staff, Councilor McCray?
Um, to you, Chair, and this is to our CEO. I noticed that within the reported highlights, um, completed salary survey of comparable municipalities, a part of an obligation to maintain pay equity. Um, my question is, will this, when do, when do we actually, um, finish the pay equity procedure? And will it have any implications as we move forward with our twenty twenty five budget? I'm exhausted.
Uh, through the chair, I don't anticipate any changes, uh, to the budget process at this point. Uh, because we just have the salary survey complete and still have to go through the rest of the process. Uh, anticipate bringing somebody to council in the first part of next year.
Thank you.
Councilor McCray.
If I may take the liberty, it's not quite a, uh, in relation to a report, but, um, this morning, um, um, Director M. Nelly, um, successfully, uh, got us onto the community, uh, sorry, the youth engagement model, actually practically, and we had a mock council meeting in here. I think that expression actually, it's been a mock council, but, uh, it, with use from the P C I, uh, and I, I'm glad to see that we're actually moving ahead of that. It's been, it's been quiet progress, actually it's practical in. And it was supported by, uh, the clerk and, and by, uh, Director Mahon today and Councilor McCray attended as well. Um, I'd just like to acknowledge that we, we, we've actually started a, a real result on that as opposed to planning. And, um, I think it was successful.
Sort of just want, the mayor had her hand up first, go ahead, Mayor Brown.
Yes, a question, uh, Director Bowles. We're all aware of what a great disturbance the, uh, the K V N proposal has, uh, caused in the community. And there's recently today, it read in one of the papers that, you know, strongly implied that council was, um, concealing information from people because there had been a, an updated report issued by K V N. But more disturbing than that is on the online news, I read that an agreement had been reached between the parties. And the reason this disturbs me is that Perth has a great stake in this development and yet we seem to be the last to know. Um, there was an in-camera session at county, which I can't divulge the nature of. But again, I didn't know about it as mayor and delegate on county council un- until the meeting. And I don't know why this happens. Um, is it because of the nature of the, the process or, um, yeah, I don't know. Could you provide any light on that subject, Director Bowles?
Through the chair, I'll answer that question. It was, uh, Perthmore that we, that the parties had reached an agreement with and that, uh, we've settled the U L T case with. There is a settlement hearing on Thursday for that, the K I V N case is still ongoing.
Oh, my apologies, like I said, K I V N in my mind.
Anybody, Councilor Waterfield, uh, through the chair to Kathy.
A quick comment and a quick question. Uh, in your report, you made reference to those supporters in the Dog Park that raised eighteen thousand dollars. And I just wanted to point out that they were being extremely heard, coming up with very innovative fundraising techniques and that they should be recognized for all of their hard work. Number two, um, with reverence in town hall reconfiguration, uh, when I walked in today, I saw the desk there. And of course, we're doing this in terms of consolidating better customer service for our citizens and also an element of safety for, for our staff. Prior to being on council, even while being on council, when we had visitors, I always include as part of Gary's welcome tour, tour of town hall. And I've often brought visitors into town hall, I've shown them the stairway with our previous, uh, mayors. Uh, I've brought them upstairs and if chambers are unlocked and there's nobody there, I've shown them around and so forth. Um, this really is the people's building, it's, it's belongs to fellow citizens. So I'm just wondering, uh, if at any point in the future with our desk now up, up front, if that scenario were to happen and citizens want to come to visit, show, show people the public areas, the building and so forth, I really hope that that would be facilitated.
Yes, through the chair, absolutely. So we constantly give tours to anyone who walks through and we're happy to, it's fun for us to do. And to showcase the building, uh, with the, with the desk at the front. As you said, we're going to enhance customer service once that gets implemented so that people, when they walk through the front door, they have one stop to go to. And then what will happen is if somebody wants to get a tour, then Megan at the front will get someone to come and greet them and give them a walk through. So we're absolutely.
Thank you, I just want to clarify that.
Councilor McCray.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Um, firstly, my sudden fleeing the building was actually a declaration of a good interest in relation to K I V N. Give my information to the clerk and I'll sign a letter for um. It's ready. Um, and just to follow up on what was said in relation to. The new format. Um. It is an unhappy fact. That s- society is not well equipped. And that we have had a number of issues outside of town. And I'm certain that the staff will be as. Co-operative as they can be. Um, but the days that people walk into the building unaccompanied. Um, I sort of cut out the window. It doesn't matter that ninety nine months, nine percent of. Um, the population is wasn't enabled through that point, one percent. That is out there now that is of a negative disposition as I think. It's clear in society as a whole become very aggressive. And threatening and inappropriate in their response. And unfortunately, like so many things in society, we have to prepare. And deal with that and keep us, our staff in a safe and um. Basically polite um in doing.
Any other comments?
This will be my last question and this to you, Chair, and this is to Grant and Han. And this has to do with future operations. And as we go into budgets. Uh, which is next Tuesday, starting at eleven o'clock. Um, I would be interested in how things are working out with the operations of the shop at the present time. With our staff. One, smooth, quickie.
Yeah, I can report in more detail by time. The staff is residing in the trailer and are still carrying on operations in the main shop.
Any other questions regarding the reports?
Grant had a follow up, yeah.
Sorry, I must share some comments related to my work area. Um. I I feel my summary was kind of light um in nature and a lot of things have taken place in the last few days, so I'm really excited. About what we made progress. So the, the two parking lots, the museum and the library, both in uh first of the national town. And I really urge you as uh councillors to walk through there, particularly the museum parking lot, which is kind of a, a lot, a jewel back there. And I do want to play a particular, the alleyway at Perth restaurant, through the urging of community services, we did digging stone in there. Which is really much more attractive as an entrance to the boardroom. So ask me just to. Take a gentle walk through and see that. We will be putting the top of the national town, this two parking lots on Thursday, so we should be fully occupied next week. They do look beautiful and they're nice, tidy, fresh. It's been a quarter, thirty years since they were tackled. I also want to identify the Perthmore sidewalk, which is complete. So it's from tree on. On tree line from there into Perthmore. So please take a walk through there. I'm very satisfied with the contractor. Really, it looks like it fit there all along. So they've done a great job. There's some minor landscaping that can take place and that will be rectified very shortly. And then our two big projects, the Cockburn Street and Tom Street. Cockburn Street is, everything is complete, shows us some minor uh surface operations. And I'm hearing back from the community within that neighborhood how excited they are with the designated parking on one side and the improvement drainage. And then Tom Street, we are looking, the concrete curbs have been laid today, laid today, so we should be pouring by Thursday. That project just has some challenges with rock removal, but the contractors working diligently to get to that stage of concrete and asphalt. Uh, Noah is doing a great job managing that project and. Later than my comfort, but it will super autonomy. So I just feeling that I. I was light on my report, so I want to herbalize these great successes this year.
Councilwater.
Just to clarify through the chair to Grant, will both Tom and Lewis have, have parking on those streets with designated parking spaces?
Tom and Lewis?
Well, the two streets that are just being done.
Oh, Cockburn Street. Yeah, right. Cockburn Street has a designated leave by area, so it's, it's not on the active um traveling. It's to the side and it's designated next to the sidewalk. And Tom Street has a, it's a reverse, it's on the travel portion of the organ, it's intermittent, but it clearly that they needed with uh.
I had a question from resident Tom Street, that's what I was asking.
Councilor Smith.
Yeah, I, excuse me, I had a look at Cockburn Street and it's very diverse. And permit, explain to me, um, the, I don't know what it's called, it's a trough down. On the parking side. And maybe you can explain what it's for. You told me that it's very, very smart.
That through the chair, we made a clear gutter between the parking slots. And the travel portion, so it's like a, a highway curb um for a use trough between the travel and the parking areas. And that will clearly delay and allow water to flow because it's relative to the doctor. If you didn't do that process, you would see water pounding because it's hard to create that with the national service.
Martin, lots of great, I've been through them three times this week. Do you have one question about parking lots, vegetation and landings? Is there a plan for that? Any others?
Yes, there will be.
Will be okay.
We're, we're going to see professional help on that because uh. I feel that we've just arbitrarily planted some stuff that may not be suitable in the past, so.
Yeah.
We want to look at the bigger long-term growth patterns that will eventually.
It made the husband of one of your town drivers very happy to hear that because she, she's thrilled what you've done and she's looking forward to seeing what you're going to do next. Okay, so that's done. Next meeting dates, special committee of the whole Tuesday, November nineteen, twenty twenty four, review the draft budget. That will be chaired by. Councilbird. Special committee of the whole Tuesday, November twenty six, that'll be chaired by myself. I'm ready to commit the whole meeting December third. Um, twenty twenty four, Lord and Council, so I'm praying. Any questions from the media? No. No, I'm listening. Yeah, any other questions? No, I have a motion to move into a closed session unless you have a question.